It is seven o'clock, so I recall the Scotty County Board of Commissioners January 16th until 1:00. And I ask Commissioner...
Alden.
I do not talk about you, John. Commissioner Alden, our application.
That is great. You've had a heavenly thought with God above. Mercies and grace, we thank you for being here for a new year. We ask you a blessing upon this county, that upon all decisions that you make that affect our citizens. We ask you to give us your grace and your wisdom, that you proceed to do the work that the people have elected us to do. They all will be doing the same tonight, be done for the betterment of all of our citizens. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Do you will join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any votes who approve the agenda, so move. A motion and a second. Do you have a second, or in favor, or if you don't say aye?
Aye.
Vote like aye. I will now open the floor for the public floor. If anyone signed up, aware of anyone here who would address the board? If not...
My name is Dale Parker. I live on St. John's Park Road in Gibson, North Carolina, and I'm actually here just to give you a few election updates. As most of you are aware, the Board of Elections did ask the State Board of Elections for a request to merge three of our precincts. Just want to bring you all aware that we did get the approval for that merge to go forward. So as of December the 18th, the Board of Elections has mailed a little over 2,600 voter cards to the voters that are affected by this merge. So now, instead of 10 precincts in our county, we now only have seven. This update has already been placed out on the Scotty County GIS website. So if anyone that would like to see the new boundaries, they can just go to the website, click on the GIS system, go to Political, make sure you put a check mark in the Scotty County Voting Precincts, your map will appear. Just in case any of you are aware of the new boundaries, I brought some printed maps of the new ones. I will lay on this table, so if y'all would like to have them, if you care with it. If there's not enough there, you can print them from the GIS system, or you can stop by the Board of Elections office, and we will gladly print one for you. The second update I would like to give you is, I guess most of you are aware, that the Fourth Circuit actually has struck down the voter ID requirement for the March 3 primary election. So for the upcoming election, there will not be a photo ID requirement. Even though that requirement is not going to be in place, the Board of Elections will still be issuing photo IDs if someone still wants to stop by and grab an ID. And the last thing I would like to bring to your attention is just to remind each of you of the voting equipment demo that is scheduled for January the 28th at the conference room at the annex building. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Ms. Parker?
Yes, sir.
The maps you brought are they the same as what we had when you presented in December?
Yes, sir, but this is actually was printed today from the GIS, just so that everybody has a completely updated one as to what is on this. Give me a moment.
Dale, could you just real quick a summary on what got, just so everybody here, just what got consolidated, where?
I can. Precinct 6, which is East Lumber Community, they actually got merged with Precinct 1, which is the Scotty County Annex Building. Precinct 5, which is John's Fire Station, has been moved to Precinct 2, which is the Learning Center over on St. Rose School Road. And Precinct 8, which was Sneed Road Community Building, has now been merged into Precinct 9, which was the Lawfield Community. Now, when you look at the new maps, you're going to notice that they're, they've actually been renamed. So it's not just going to be Precinct 01 through 07. 01 is now going to be 01-16. So in the future, if anybody ever asks, you know, that's Precinct 1, but it's where 1 and 6 was combined. And it'll be like that on all of them. And then Precinct 10, which was Gibson Fire Station, is now going to be known as Precinct 6. So that we will stay in the same numbers of 1 per 7. Any other questions? Thank you.
Anyone else who should address the board? If not, then I will close the public floor and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second. In discussion, all in favor, if you don't say aye?
Aye.
Vote like aye. All right. Mr. Andrew Jones.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ms. Ray Jones, I'm the Currie JCPC Coordinator, and for Scotty County, I'd like to recommend submission of the Raise the Age expansion budget to the full board. As you are aware, that except for the parts of 2019, Raise the Age came effect in North Carolina. And each county received additional allocations of funds to support our juvenile prevention capsule in our children in this county. As of December 1st, and once the budget was approved, we received an additional $19,015 for the JCPC programs. Our juvenile prevention capsule met December 2nd, and we approved the allocation as such. We had an additional $1,000 in the administrative budget, $5,275 for the youth empowerment program for Parks and Ministry, additional $6,890 was given to restitution for Scouts for Youth, and the teen court program under Scouts for Youth received $2,979, and the substance abuse program for Scouts for Youth received $2,871. And that was approved by the JCPC board, and this is just a recommendation for approval for the commission. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, well, we have 16 and 17 years, now do you want to discuss this?
Any more questions? If there's no questions, I am now the initiator. If I can do accept the 2020 budget funding.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, if you don't say aye?
Aye.
Vote like aye.
Thank you, Charlie. Appreciate it.
Standing before you this evening, reference to our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, for the past few months, we've sought ways to become more efficient as a board, and thought it would be a good idea to revise our bylaws. Lieutenant Kirkson inherited a subcommittee of our advisory board to update the bylaws for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And they've approved bylaws, basically reducing the number of members from 15 to 12, and a 50% forum of six members. In addition to some term limits as well, two years. That information is before you guys. I just wanted, again, the advisory board committee did revise this information, approved unanimously, and standing here before you to answer any questions that you may have regarding on bylaws for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
What's different from old bylaws?
Old bylaws had a 15-member board. The new bylaws are a 12-member board with a six-member press forum. We found about three or four different versions of the bylaws, and really weren't sure which ones that we were operating by, to be honest with you. Some of them have four members as a board, some had seven members as a board. And we trimmed that number, just so we can do business effectively, you know? We found that we've had around 10 to 12 members show up consistently. We've had 15 members on the board, and you know, you have two or three members that just don't show up. So, you know, we thought it was good for us to trim that number down so that we could conduct business on a civilized, multiple place. So, a bylaw for that. And this does have the county commissioners appointing 10 members of the board. With, you know, Mr. Odom is currently representing you guys on our advisory board, representing the county commissioners. Obviously, the county commissioners' term is unlimited, heading into bylaws.
Anyone have any questions?
May I move and approve the bylaws as presented?
Second. A motion and a second, if we approve the bylaws as presented. All in favor, if you don't say aye?
Aye.
Vote like aye.
Thank you, Mike.
All right. My age, the 500 communications tower update.
Mr. Chairman, and Admiral General, for the Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to come talk to you this afternoon about some funding requests we're looking for on our new tower here in Scotty County. My name is Mike Edson, I'm in Highland Communications, ready for Scotty County. Just to give you a little bit about this project, this is actually three projects in one. We're building a radio tower, a new radio tower, we're actually upgrading our radio equipment, and we're actually upgrading our communication equipment inside of dispatch. Funding sources for this is four different funding sources, one being the county, Horizon Wireless is partnered with us, and they're funding the majority of this project. Also, the state and island one board is funding some of this project. And the fourth being the North Carolina Highway Patrol and Partnership, and they're going to put some funding to. One of the reasons that we're asking for the price increase is, one of the recommendations we had, when we first started the project, we had one radio vendor, where he had retired, and what he done, well, he basically told us to put seven eighths inch cable up. The new radio vendor is coming in, and he's saying that we really need to put an inch and a half cable up, so that we'll improve what we're doing, because we're already in the tower, keeping our feet. So that was a little bit of a price increase. The other thing too is, our radios, our radios, basically, or we have gotten a letter from the North Carolina Highway Patrol about our AM radios, they're not what the Phase 2 compatible. By 2025, Highway Patrol is hoping to do Phase 2 compliant on everything, and so to make us be able to do that, when the time comes, we're requesting for that increase in funding to do that. The other thing we did was, we actually requested from the state 911, for about $250,000 in requests for the 911 centers, radio equipment upgrade. And at a meeting that me and Ms. Hobson went to a couple of weeks ago, we talked over with the board staff, and about $56,000 of that request was my approval, again, to disallow the scope of what the 911 board asked for. So that cost come back to the county too. This is actually going to improve our whole radio system greatly, one of the things that we've been having a lot of issues with, the sheriff's partners trying to get out, get back in here, you know? We're thinking this is going to dramatically improve that situation, but it's also going, this will actually lead Scotty County into the future as a whole, to be quick. And we're asking for a funding increase. Do you have any questions?
Question, Kevin. We couldn't go back and devise, if we really can, with Horizon, what increase?
Don, also, a lot of the money that we're, that people are asking for is not solely, it's not solely because of the tower, it is because of our communication system that we, the communication operators that we have.
Anyone have any questions, Mike?
I think the one question, Mike, I hope you can answer it. I've heard, on occasion, conversation about our radios not being able, we're not able to talk to neighboring county radios when we've had emergency situations. Will this, will this fix that?
It, it will fix that in some way or another. The other problem we have though is that we might not have the frequencies, the other things. One being, off the top of my head, which we kind of sheriff's department, they run off 800, our sheriff's department runs off the UHS. We can move to 800 and talk to all of them, but, so, but yes, to kind of answer you, how about Wade, yeah, we will be able to better talk to people, it's just making sure that we have, have the map of the region.
You said you found out that the 911 wasn't funded 56, did they fund the rest of the 250?
They funded, it's 80, their figure was 33% is what they funded that for.
Any more questions?
Yeah, my question is, why would you not go to that 800 frequency, whatever it is with South County, is the money?
Well, it's kind of like our consultant, they told me, he said to go to a 800 system, it'll probably run us in around about $5 million.
That's if we're putting an entire system in. If we use the highway patrol as a backbone, we could do it for misputting, and radios and all sheriff's vehicles would cost us about $350,000.
That would be a one-time cost?
Well, that would be until you have the first time.
Well, that's a quick because, I think that Viper system, you have to pay some kind of monthly or yearly.
No, there's, there's not a monthly fee. There's, there's not a monthly fee, it's just basically the expense of radios. Just to give you a ballpark, UHF, DHF radio runs you about, you can get one for $700, $800. You're talking a portable radio, Viper, 800, you're looking at $2,500, starting. It's almost three to four pounds of price of regular radio system. And, and just so you're aware too, is, the other day, EMS is the only agency we have that's fully operating off Viper radio system. But the other day, we did a doctor, on Viper system, because, and we had the highway patrol come down and check out the radio revision, they said it was confined, they obtained it to weather. So the weather literally cut it off, so we had to basically back up EMS and use the old DHF system instead of using the 800 system. That's one of the downfalls to the 800, is it's a state-owned system, the state takes it down when they want to, they're managing when they want to, and they really, you can call, you can say, you know, do you want it down today or not? So 800 is big, it has moments, but there are some moments that's bad when you're talking.
So the problem you just mentioned is not going to be fixed by this either?
It won't be fixed by this, no. What, what this will actually do is, what Highway Patrol is saying is that in 2025, we got a letter from them that says that in 2025, we're going to Phase 2 compliant radios. So if we don't have Phase 2 compliant radios, we can't use that system. Doing this, we're replacing our radios, what happened is, when they go to Phase 2, they'll call us, we'll do software update on our equipment, we won't be no down. If we waited to replace the hardware later, we would take all, have to take all the hardware out, take us off air, and then put it back, equip it. So now's really the prime opportunity to try to do that, because we're actually going to have two towers at one point in time standing up beside each other.
Also, Highway Patrol does go to Phase 2. The 800 megahertz radios we have now are going to be great doorstopps.
Any more questions? Is it not the council committee met this morning and voted to recommend the full board that we approved this bid on $190,000, an increase for the tower budget? I remember the animation of the board to approve the bid on $190,000. A motion and a second, and a motion. All in favor, if you don't say aye?
Aye.
Vote like aye.
Thank you, Mike.
I'd like to welcome everybody here, but at this point, I just congratulate and welcome everybody here, and glad you came, and appreciate your interest in our county. All right, and we move on. The next name is Mr. Mike McDougal, present the person of the new fire truck.
Mr. Chairman, the Scotty County Board of Commissioners, I'm here to be a member of the committee. Every time I come to the board, the fire commissioner requests for strengthening the fire service in this county, a lot, I think. And I'm here to grant you the request of the store's fire truck, as I told you July, and I brought the proposal to you, of one year of fire parks. This will be the last truck for four or five years. With now, if this truck gets approved, we've replaced all the pumpers in the county, and the tire crews, hopefully, will last over the five years before we have to start replacing those, the $550,000 million money, where we can save the tire crews without a problem. The store's truck is $354,000. They're right there on budget, with the proposal, like, if they back in the fire patches, put it into effect. And with the rate of inflation that put their truck at $354,000 bid, Chief Jones got on it, he requested three bids, he only got two, one company wouldn't bid, and thank you, Mr. Peters, was the second bid, that was like $390,000, Big South was $354,000. The truck that he's put together, Big South will build, is equal to the one you put up for Spring Hill back in July. Big South also bid, that is doing that truck now. If this truck gets approved, it'll be in here in eight to nine months, I'm wondering that maybe, Spring Hill truck should be in here in another four months, something like that. We have two of Big South trucks in the county, on the two pumpers at Hornburg Mall and South Station, or Big South trucks too. This, this is a request the fire commission met in September, Chief Jones brought the spats before us, everybody took them home, had three months to look them over, understand what they were looking at, and then we'll do that again in December, with the budget done, with unanimous budget, the party before you can change commissioners for further. If you get this truck to upfit on the other fire truck business call.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. McDougal? If not, as you can see on the screen, the Big South fire truck was a low bidder, about $30,000, $1,000. And the fire commission gave the vote to approve the purchase of this fire truck, and I am taking a motion now, Commissioners, to approve the purchase of this fire truck.
Second.
A motion and a second, I think we're station. All in favor, if you don't say aye?
Aye.
Vote like aye. Matt, thank you for your...
Thank you. You're involved in your part of the work.
Mike, before you go, can I ask you one question, unrelated to this? Do you, are you involved with the city on their pumpers, buying their pumpers, or is the fire commission, is that just a county thing, or that?
Am I involved?
I didn't know if the commission was involved in that.
Because each fire department goes out and gives three bids, and they say, um, the truck, and they have any alignment, did they just spend?
Right, right, no, I understand that. What I'm leading, well, let me just tell you why I'm leading to this question. You know, the city has city trucks, pumpers, and has county pumps, and you know the arrangement, so you, you know, sometimes that's going to cross over and all that stuff. But the last number I saw on it, from this center last year, that county truck at the South Station 61 is getting used on 95% of the fire calls in the city. I didn't count, it's just city calls. And I was wondering, do you know that we're planning to buy them to replace, to get themselves frontline pumping?
The unit 11, that was at the North Station before the hurricane, when that truck, the new truck was bought, the fire commission and the commission of the board were ready to let them use that one as the city pumper also, because they didn't have base space to put another truck in, the ladder truck. And the city, you know, I don't have any problem with them using the county truck, because the ladder truck, and then other, their men, the paid firemen and all, responded in the county too.
I understand, I, it's not like, you know, what I'm getting to there is, is, and I know that agreement was in with unit 11, because of that space at the North Station and all that's changed, but it was 61 that was the one that was the question, that's getting used in most, 95%, that's the stat, right? In, in, in city calls. And we only, again, no problem with using the truck, because there's going to be times that we're going to do that. My concern is, it's going to come up on a time real fast, where that truck ain't going to be even good, and, you know, and if you use it, go beyond its service real quick, if it's got a shorter life cycle span than the rest, or is it on the same cycle as all the rest of the county trucks?
It's on the same cycle, of all the rest.
That's all it is.
Am I here, are you saying the town, the city is using the truck 95% of the time?
Yeah, that's what the number was, we got from the 911 centers, were in city limit calls, that South Station unit, and I'm specifying 61, is being used on 95% of the in-city calls right now. But there's a reason for that. I wasn't going to get into all this, but I'll get into it. North Station truck, the only frontline poker the city owns is that ladder truck, and that's a great parade maker, but that's their call. South Station really doesn't have a frontline poker at the city. Unit 6, because it's based in Shop, that's about, so 61 ends up pulling the load. I'm just concerned it's going to be pulling too much load, and, and go past its, and outlive its life before the time in the cycle for it to do.
Well, they're, they're on the schedule, they're probably supposed to come down the line, and the other thing that that refund brings to all the proof, we're going to be paying part of the repair bills on these trucks. The county...
on these trucks, the county on trucks. And we've got a subcommittee of non-firemen that will oversee the bills the government needs to be paying. We're doing everything we can.
I'm not questioning that. I just wanted to make, I had your role in that in my head, but.
It's confusing when you've got a city in county, not county in one apartment.
And like I said, there's always going to be times, it don't matter what truck or who owns it, they're going to have to fight fire with it. And I understand that. Concerned is that, are we going to outrun its life by doing that?
And don't, and don't forget, we've also got unit 11. I mean, they've got two county trucks, both.
The number was specifically 61. And 95, out of 400 calls, it ran 385 of the calls in the city. And so that's the only reason. I just don't want it to outrun its life. I don't know if you have a plan for them to buy a new frontline pumper or not.
I'll, I'll check into that too. Keep up with the report. Thank you. Thank you, man. Director, if you'd ever.
Good evening. Take a look at the revenues and expenditures as of December 31st. We had an overall budget of $44.3 million. We've brought in $21.9 million in revenues, which is 49% of our budget. Of expenditures, we have expended $19.6 million, which is 46% of our budget.
Can I just, you, you have this by your park metal, park down in your packets? There's no way of putting all that up here, so we just consolidate it down.
So I guess are there any questions as far as looking through the, I guess, more detailed sections?
Ben, do you see anything in here that you want to point out to us? And I've read through it, nothing jumped at me, but I'm not fine.
There, right now, everything is pretty much on track. There's nothing unusual. We have several projects that are ongoing that, of course, we have not paid for. So, of course, our expenses right now are lower than probably anything that we've had in the past. As far as anything unusual, there has, has been nothing.
Two. First one is capital hasn't been paid out to school yet. Is that normal?
That is normal. Basically, what happens with that is that the school finance officer, I'll make contact with her at some point throughout the year to request the documentation that, for the items that they have spent on capital. Those are usually items that they have brought before commissioners on the, I guess, in one of the budget retreats. So we kind of review those documents and we pay out accordingly.
The other is that 101% on the store properties.
Yes, that is.
I assume you listed 25, but you paid one time, so why?
So what happens, I think, last year, the, the store properties museum needed a telephone. And it's cheaper to go through the county to get phone service. And so the county more or less pays the bill with the other bills that come through countywide. And so at the end of the year, we request that and we reverse back.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any more questions, Ben? All right, thank you, Ben. All right, I don't wish to have any further discussion.
Well, it's a little bit different than what I originally started tonight to be, but, but I'll just leave, stay off of that topic and talk about what, what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing on, on this location while we break. I don't think it solved our sound issue of everybody being able to hear, and especially on the video recording. If you watch that YouTube, mostly watching here is the air conditioning or that fan running on that plate there. You know, it works great on the closed captioning, the automatic closed captioning. It picks up Dale perfect. If you watch her on there, it's all great. But if you watch Bob on there, it looks like you're cussing because it puts up the little question marks, you know.
I don't know what you're saying.
So, I, I mean, what I'm suggesting here is, and, and, and we're going to remain here, that we're probably going to have to put a little bit of money out there into some sort of sound system that'll work for all of us. Everybody, either mic or a pale mic or something that'll go through that sound ward and into that camera directly rather than the camera picking it up from the end of the sound. Because it's just got too much air behind it and you can't hear. And I think there's some people in the audience every once in a while, it has a problem here too. So that's just throwing it out there to, you know, if we wanted to get somebody to come in and take a look at it, there's enough sound people around this town, county, that know how to do that stuff without having to make some big consulting deal out of it. Just to help us manage through that and get that thing. If YouTube is working great, the video is working great, the sound in some cases are working great. But, you know, in, in the, the automatic closed captioning, I think is what a lot of people like about it because they can read it on most people talking. But there's always a few words that some country person, you know, may say that, but, um, so that was why I wanted to talk about that tonight.
I have a question about this setup here. And I want to ask the audience, these two screens here, do they affect you in any way? The two that's set up here that we see, they're, they're okay for you to look over them or at them? You okay with that? I'm not hearing much.
I hear kids rolling up in there.
They're going there.
You okay with this, man?
I want to nod my head.
I have this question. This room hasn't been set up for our meetings, right? Is that correct? It's not a permanent place that we can fix up by our own use. This is used for, okay.
This is, this is used for a number of other, other functions. As a matter of fact, I know they're having training in here tomorrow.
Because I would love to see it made more like it. Like, uh, uh, boys, you know, should have, but, yeah, I can understand, you know, that we, this is our own, as Carol said, this is our own.
I'm not going to tap my legacy.
This is Carol legacy. And, uh, and it's nice to be, have you on. I would love to, you know, say, but we have our own setup that we had before. And then social service be on, or whatever the health, health department, whatever it was. But I understand.
Let me respond, maybe I'm on the same page with you on that. I might have our own space. This is what we, you know, your county dollars pays for this nice room. And I think we can work toward that. It is a multi-purpose room, but we can bring the pictures that show the historical progression of all the past chairs and board. They can be put up in this room in some way to give us some sense of formality. I think that's what you're looking for. And in the old commissioners' chambers, they had the mission and the goal printed on my sticker, and they hung up in the room. And that would lend an air of formality and of government presence. So I think we can work toward that and enhance this room so that it really does feel like a commissioner meeting.
And I would love to see some panels in front of the tables, I mean, a different kind of clothes in.
Yes. My goal would be to just continue to enhance this and embellish it and make it as good as we can.
I think to do that, I think Tim's suggestion is a good one. I think we need to have somebody who can come in and look at the sound system we've got and even make recommendations or improvements so that it is functional as far as the people who are here. And if we can't do that, then we might need to look about going somewhere else. But I think that my first choice would be to try to fix that problem in this, in this room.
And if we fix the sound, it's for everything. It's not just for this meeting, it's for everything that takes place in this meeting when we're having other stuff that comes in from the county.
Right, and, and, you know, going back into talking about if you get it or someone else, it would always be, that you could always pick it up and win, so you wouldn't have to reinvest in that. But that's just a thought I had, that we want to get it completely right. You know, I think the sound is our biggest challenge here right now.
Any more discussion? So then, what I'm hearing, we need to direct somebody, check into the sound system. I believe I'm looking directly at the chat. I'm looking at his staff.
And then he can direct it.
So let, so we can do what we can do about the sound.
And we use Carol to decorate. I'm just joking.
In hands, I'm not, I don't decorate, I'm hands.
All right, Kevin?
Okay. The next item, man, have a request from the Board of Elections to reclassify the director and the deputies or the assistants positions. Then come back in, please, we'll finish this afternoon, so you have them at your place. Recommendation, please would keep the pay scale that we have, but match very closely the recommendation from the Board of Elections, which is what the board has expressed interest on. So with this, it would actually not be a reclassifications of the elections record. It would be an increase in steps to grade 73, but a step nine. The, it would actually be the elections clerk position. Basically, we'd be creating a position in the pay scale of a deputy director that would be effectively reclassified by her and creating that deputy director position. And that would be on a grade 63, going to a step five. It's you very close to the elections, to the actual Board of Elections. Board of Elections request. And that's on the single sheet that was at your station. And we do, we did get, we have, HR got a number of them, Dale brought others down today as well. Those are the salaries beneath the two positions, so you can see comparables. And we also, she brought in sample job description, so we can modify it for an deputy director position.
Any questions? I guess, I guess what we're looking for then is if I change the director relation to a 73 man and a creative position to below him.
Yes, sir.
To create a deputy election. And Bert would be a 63 dash five. That would be a motion to do that and then we can do.
Do an effective, an effective date.
Effective date all in one?
Yes, sir.
They need to have a discussion about whether to make January 1st or January 16th. So I think what I heard more than anything else is to make it January 1st as opposed to January, effective January 1st as opposed to January 16th. Is that, I'll undertake a motion then on that.
No motion.
Again, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Give your second.
Before I second that, Bob, just one clarification. We need to specify that deputy election position, that it would be the person that's currently in that position.
If you want, man.
In other words, we're creating a position that I don't have now. Should we say that that's eliminating the other position?
That, that.
Voting the person that is in it. I'm just following.
So that position will stay there even if this person won't?
Well, it's, you're, you're, really, you're just reclassing the position to a new.
But I mean, we specified as we, all right, well, I second.
Are we all together now?
I, I have a question for, for two discussions. Is it, is this, are these the numbers, the salaries that we, that we're approving or voting on? Are those the ones that were recommended to us by the Board of Elections two months ago?
With the expectation of this.
$670,000.
Kevin, on the current and middle, 63.5. Now, I think, right now, yeah, current.
Yes, sir.
All right, no. Explain to me about the number.
The men and max, those are just the, we have ranges.
The roles?
Yes, that's the minimum we can make, and then the maximum. And that varies based on county by county. Like Robinson County actually has a 40 step. Ours is.
16.
16.
Any, any more questions? Or ready to vote? Figures I'm looking at that were approved is $57,660 and $33,324. Dollar amounts. We have a motion, and a second. All in favor, let us know, are we ready?
Where are you seeing those, where are those figures?
Some of this sheet in that, in that.
Director of the election.
And those figures, each of those figures is $670 less than what was requested by the.
Yes, sir.
$672.
$672.
For per year.
And that's a damn, that was over a year.
Yes, sir.
I, I have to add, so why, why did we make the decision to do it less than what we recommended?
Maybe that's just where it fell in, on the grades in there. And if you chose a grade, you would have.
Between steps.
Yeah, yes.
All in favor of that?
Yes.
All in favor, let us know, say aye.
Aye.
Vote aye.
Next item is with, for the tax assessor. As Mary Helen Norton retired, currently need to make an appointment of our tax administrator. It is, under statute, is a two or four-year contract that must be appointed. So what we're going to be asking is an appointment of James Brown, different James Brown, to a two-year contract. And he has been our appraiser for the past, a little over seven years. And he has received all certifications to be a tax assessor. He's been doing that in the last little over a year, working under Mary Helen as the deputy director. That, the board created that position a little over a year ago, just so we could groom someone to develop this, develop our place and structure.
Is he here today, Mike?
Yes.
Jim, would you stand up? I didn't reckon, I had to look around the room for you.
Oh, dear, that's all right.
You cleaned up pretty well, that'll have been, it looked like a bad.
I appreciate that.
We appreciate you. All right, you heard. I'll wait your clearance this back.
I make a motion that we approve Mr. Brown as our new tax assessor, a two-year term beginning January 1, 2000.
That's good.
We have a motion.
Well, I have a question about, um, you answered part of that when we were talking about we decided to put him in that a year ago. And just don't take this as some sort of opposition. I'm saying, should we, would, would this be a. I'm saying, should we, would, would this be a position that we should, could, or maybe have to advertise before we do this?
When we, once the Board created the deputy director position, or the deputy administrator position.
So that's his title now, the deputy?
He's currently the deputy administrator. When we did that, we advertised and we recruited for deputy administrator with the intention of becoming a good administrator.
Got it. That's the only thing.
Like a hundred percent election.
Well, that's not real, but ninety-nine point nine.
All, you had a motion and second. All in favor of appointing Mr. Brown as the tax successor? If you don't say aye.
Aye.
But otherwise. Mr. Brown?
I just like to thank you for the comments, and in the coming days, if you've got any questions, please come by and ask, talk down.
I had to play to work pretty close to him for a number of years, he's always been fair, and now he's not.
I have a question. Do we need a new appraiser?
We hired one. We hired one.
And it just struck me on a side note, please let everyone know, if you're looking for any type of property tax exemption, go ahead and tell them where his office is, so they get down there this month. Because half the time, they'll want to come and ask you in June, or when we send out our grading cards in July and August. At that point in time, it is too late. So encourage people to apply for any type of exemptions.
That's good information. I will announce it by church.
That is a problem.
For appointments, I'm really pleased tonight that we can make no promises to our aging advisory council. We have a recommendation, or two recommendations, and two requests, to appoint Ms. Brenda Gilbert and Mr. Phil Rett to the, kind of, aging advisory council. So I'm making, either names in my mind.
Are these re-appointments?
Do what?
Are they re-appointments?
No, they're, the theme are new appointments to the board.
You heard the motion, you say?
Say.
And the motion, you say, of all of the, appointing Ms. Brenda Gilbert and, you know, how do you pronounce the last one?
Rett.
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 Mr. Rett to the aging board. All in favor, let it be. Y'all must say aye.
Aye.
But otherwise.
Hopefully, we try to, this shouldn't be reasonably short. Of course, we do have a community center meeting, or a community input meeting, this Thursday at seven o'clock at Church of the Rock, to discuss community centers, specifically the community center in Laurel Hill. We have sent out a press release in last week about this as well. With this and the structure of this meeting, since, my understanding, it was designed to be an input session, we want to hear from the community. We did bring in a facilitator, Dale Emery, who facilitated the last commissioner for retreat. He will come in and act, and basically, our goal is to ask, kind of refine the questions of the Board back down into two questions. What county-wide programs, activities do you want offered in the community? And then, what events or activities are already happening in the community that you need facilities replaced with? Everything else kind of branch back into one of those two opportunities on a larger form of vision. So the goal would be for, to create a situation where we can break people into groups as they come in, ask them in small groups to work on those questions together, so that that information can then be taken, brought back to the commissioners for a work session for you to draw a form of vision for what you see happening in Laurel Hill, as well as what you may want to extend out to other communities as well. Now, with this, tonight, we're not going to ask you to recess to that meeting, where we advertise this as a special meeting of the Board. We will collect questions from the community, so that we can get them all together, come up, answer, and then send those answers out to everybody all at once. And at least some of the visioning is that the commissioners, as well as Parks and Recreation staff, any of them are there. Actually, the goal is not to have you participate just to observe, because this is a community input session, and if you get involved in a conversation, or Brian gets involved in a conversation, that is going to steer the input. So the goal is to have it with the community. We do have forced, four people from administration volunteered to help in small group, follow the facilitations. Some of them realize they volunteered about two weeks after they did, but that's okay. So, but we are going to be looking, trying to get that information for this Thursday, so we want as much participation in the Laurel Hill community as possible.
This meeting really is something that we talked about in our meeting, and we had something I can do about needing with these communities and, you know, my people that were needed. This is really a carryover of what we did in our planning, our planning retreats. They came a little earlier than we explained, but anyway, it's kind of the way I look at it.
The folks that come there that are still will be able, they want to speak, they can speak sometime during that meeting, because I know a lot of space.
I'll talk to a bunch of people.
I want to make sure we didn't do that part of it.
You know, I want to, I want to talk to the viewers, I think, come with, like, these questions right here, you know, put a, a follow in mind, what can we do, what's needed, how would we use, this, that, you know, like you said. The ones that I can talk to and affect.
I don't think they'll have these problems.
But, yeah, it's sort of me, y'all be able to believe.
Well, and that would be part of it, after you do the facilitation, and you collect the input of the whole group, if the Board wants to open it up for general, additional comments, that would probably be the best time to do that.
I'm going to strongly suggest that we do it that way, because hopefully, if the facilitation works well and is successful, a lot of the things that they want to say will have already been said and been heard by us, and it will be recorded. I think if, if we start out with people speaking in the beginning, that can, we want to be able to allow people to share their information with each other. And I think if we have a really good facilitation and a sharing of ideas and learning what the county can and cannot do, that'll answer a lot of questions, and then we can open it up for comments. But I would definitely do that piece after the, we break up into small groups.
I want to share with you what I've been told and what I've been hearing, and then what I've been talking to. Said the problem is not really in demolishing what's there, they have a problem. The problem they have is we tear it down and do nothing. That's, that's the whole nutshell. I mean, that's, I think we need, it's our job to convince the people in Laurel Hill, across the county and all of Laurel Hill, that if we say we're going to tear it down and build something, then there should not be a question in anybody's mind, they have said we're going to tear it down, we're going to build this out of that, and be, that was all the problem. The fear that I hear is, you know, tear it down and walk away and leave a blank hole. And I'm sure, everybody that I've talked to, that our board is, or a lot of them, are committed to doing something in Laurel Hill, not just tearing it down and walking away from it. I just share that with you. Again, please.
The next item, just had a conversation with Carol just about, and also had a number of conversations with some others, talking about, first of all, one conversation was talked about boards and procedures. For it, the school of government has updated their standard rules and procedures, and it's probably time to go off and just look at those again. And also, I'd like to change up on some, a little bit on how we've been doing the budget meetings. Instead of having one in February, then another one in May, actually probably go to more of a structured and pre-planned budget process for the Board's participation throughout. And with that, since the Board of Elections is already having elections equipment demonstrations on the twenty-eighth at ten o'clock and two o'clock, actually, I would recommend that the Board consider meeting, again, on the twenty-eighth at eleven-thirty, will be in the, in the Department of Extension kitchen, right next door to where the Board of Elections is going to be. Give you another reason to be there, and actually go back over these, and then look at kind of how we want to move through, how you'd like to move through the budget going forward, so we can set some clear goals and expectations on just meetings, kind of get away from maybe some of the marathon meetings, and have regular manageable, more planned meetings for the budget process, and possibly have a conversation about how you'd like to handle work sessions and all the rest of it.
And you want to do that on?
The twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth at eleven-thirty.
Yes. But that was just because hopefully, most of you will already be at the elections for that point in time, April, March. So that's why the recommendation is that.
What do you reckon, you settled tonight?
You would have to recess to this, or you can establish, we can establish a special meeting.
That stayed out for the, everybody up.
I'm having surgery on Sunday. Function about twenty-eight.
You know, I can't, I have a seven mark. I'll be able to show this.
Put that day on hold, again.
Okay.
Work on another day, maybe.
All right. And it can also be something that we'd love to do, establishing a second, different retreat date in February also, that would be more convenient.
You said, you said, things about the retreat in February, right?
Yes.
You have it prior to, in the middle to end of February, I probably don't know.
Well, the next item is the budget work session, or the budget retreat for February. Looking for February eighteenth, that's a Tuesday, I believe.
Yes, dear.
Beginning at nine o'clock at the Morgan Center. And then we can look, now, that date you do not need to decide on today, because you'll have, you know, you'll have a February meeting to recess on. But if that date is good for you, and also, the big thing of it is, in addition to budget, what are some of the topics that you would like to discuss? We'll come up with a draft agenda between now and the February meeting, send that out just to start a discussion, but any other topics that you would like to have on that agenda, if you would let me or let Jason know what those are, and go ahead and start building that.
Decide, decide it'll be eighteen, but it'll have to be after ten.
After ten.
I know, I want it to be in town.
And that, again, that's just a starting point for conversation.
Move to the next week, and that takes it further out for our two commissioners to recruit, okay? Because of next week.
I think I need it.
To get back on their two feet.
Yes, yes.
So we may look at the final weekend, February?
February, yeah. I'll look that up, yeah.
Might we get the chambers sent out email, or?
Yes, sir. Okay. The last item is just a reminder, the chamber's Angel Dinner is January twenty-third.
The county has a table.
If you are interested, they will go. And you're not sitting at a different table, because I know in the past with the commissioners, you also have other tables on the table, if you'll let me, or actually, if you'll let Jason know, because the chambers are already harassing him, us figuring out who's going to be there. So if you'll let us know as quick as possible, so we'll know the plan. That is all I have.
Looking for, are there any, do you have any?
No, just an update on the rises down here, and I just got this sitting here. An email came from Senator Tillis's office out of D.C., from an attorney that works for him on the, on the subcommittee of intellectual property, that they're going to have hearings on what's going on, not specifically to this, but basically what's happened here, where the money's gone, and why it was paid out, or if I already see work on it.
That's why you know all that.
That's good.
Again, like, I already.
We got a little conversation.
I love you, John. You say?
No, come on out.
All in favor, God. All right. All right.